We're at our District 4 City Council Forum for the 43rd District Democrats.
It's, is it loud?
Okay. I can do that. All right. This is the mic the candidates are using, so keep that in mind. Okay. For those of you that don't know, the 43rd Legislative District runs from downtown Seattle through North Capitol Hill over to Wallingford and Fremont, and includes the University District here. The 43rd District Democrats, we volunteer to register voters, to get out of vote, and to hold forums like this, and it's really great to see you all here today. Talk to Jesse at Sign In if you're interested in signing up as a member or being more involved. I just have a couple of quick announcements before we get started. On Tuesday, June 18th, at 7:00 PM is our primary endorsements meeting, where you can, 43rd members can come and vote for the candidates we'll be endorsing in the District 4 race, in District 3, and other city council races, county councils, school board, port. There's a lot of elections this cycle. Come out and have your voice heard. That's at King Hall, just across campus, at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 18th. If you are a new member, you need to sign up by today in order to vote, so please do that before you leave. Then on June 26th is the first presidential primary debate. There will be 10 candidates debating. We don't know which ones yet, but we will be watching it at St. Andrews Bar &amp; Grill, north of Green Lake, with the 36th District Democrats and King County Young Dems. And the venue's all ages. We'll have debate bingo and surprises to win, so it'd be really great to see you all there. With that being said, I'm really excited to introduce our moderator for this afternoon's forum, Day Shit Kim Hawkins Jr. Day is currently the Director of Development at The Cut, a columnist for Crosscut, and has been published in The Nation, South Seattle Enroll, The Seattle Weekly, and The Atlantic. We're grateful to him for agreeing to moderate today, and I will pass it over to him.
Thank you for that introduction. I'm excited to moderate this forum that looks to be sponsored by Barrier. We're in Seattle. I'm excited to be here, involved in a lot of grassroots organizing, different campaigns in the past, and just looking to see democracy happen more in underrepresented communities. So I'm always encouraged by the platform that the 43rd puts out, and I'm hoping to see continued transformative change happen from this LD. And so I'd like to begin by having the candidates introduce themselves, about 50 seconds each. Thankful for my timekeeper over there reminding me of the time. So if I start to get, you know, a little tight with the time, it's not my fault. It's his fault. So remember that. So one minute each, and yeah, just introduce yourselves and also why you feel like you would be the best representative for the 43rd LD's support. And we can start here. I'll arrange the order as we go on.
I'm Kathy Tuttle, and I feel like I know a lot of you already because I've been knocking on doors. I've knocked on, I'm moving up to my 5,000th door in this district, and it's wonderful to meet you. It's wonderful to get to know you. This is the first time I've run for political office, but I've been involved politically in my work professionally and personally. I remember when I was about six years old, walking picket lines with my mother, who was organizing for the American Federation of Teachers in Pittsburgh, trying to get a teachers' union started, and then handing out flyers for Shirley Chisholm way back then. And I was also the second female carpenter in the carpenters' union in Pennsylvania. I really do believe in the power of collected voices, and I believe that I can serve you well as your representative for this district. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Frank Krueger. I am a renter and a small business owner down in Wallingford by Gasworks Park. I've been running my own business for 15 years now, and today I spend actually most of my time running, I always have an Android app for your phones, they're educational apps, and I'm trying to spread engineering knowledge around the world. But in the past, I worked in immigration. I helped a bunch of people, really kind, intelligent people, get out of very exploitative situations. I hired them, got them jobs, kept them employed, got their green cards, and eventually onto citizenship. That made me passionate about public service and about helping people in need. I think Seattle's had a very awesome time, honestly, where we're having this moment of growth, and a lot of new people and faces are showing up in the city. And it's up to us to make sure that we capitalize on that growth and expand our social services so that this city is livable for everyone. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Myers. I am a scientist here at the University of Washington, where I do Parkinson's disease research. And I'm also an executive board member with UAW 4121, which is the union of postdocs and graduate students on this campus. We have over 5,500 members, so I'm a representative for them. And I'm also somebody who's done a lot of science policy work throughout, both with Seattle 500 Women Scientists, an organization that is dedicated to equity and STEM, as well as building inclusive environments for us all to work in, and building scientific voices that are trusted in public to speak truth to public. I'm running for office in this district because I think we need scientifically informed solutions in order to tackle the biggest challenges that we have in this city. And that means having somebody that has the ability and experience to analyze data, but not just to create good policies, but to get, to build a movement for our progressive policies, because it's going to take all of us to get this city to the future of where we need to be. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Joshua Newman. I'm an engineer at Boeing. I've been there for 13 years. For 13 years I've been in the union there. I've been a lifeguard, a research assistant here at the UW, a pizza delivery driver in the past. My wife and I live in Ravenna. We're raising our four kids there, who are in public schools. And I'm running because as an engineer, I'm focused on solving problems. And obviously, Seattle is facing a number of challenges, especially regarding growth and climate change. And we need to be able to plan for the future and make sure that our city is resilient so that we can welcome new neighbors while also supporting the people who are here now. Right? And so I see that there's really three ways that we need to be doing that. First, we need to make sure that it is easy to get around without a car. Cars aren't our future. Second, we need to build more houses of more shapes and more sizes so that people can find housing that fits their needs. And third, we need to build enough renewable energy to completely get off the fossil fuels.
How's it going, everybody? Good afternoon, Sean Scott. It's an honor to be here competing for the 43rd LD Democrats' endorsement alongside other candidates here. As somebody who worked as a field organizer for Millard Gia Paul, was also a delegate for Bernie Sanders in the 36th LD when I lived there in 2016, I know that the 43rd is one of the most progressive LDs in the state, if not the country. Excited about the platform that we have here at the LD. I joined the 43rd LD for the express purpose of voting in favor of the municipal broadband internet platform thing that was adopted into this LD's platform back in September of last year. And so as somebody who used to work as the editor of Real Change News, I know very, very intimately the struggles that we have in our city around homelessness and houselessness. Look forward to a productive conversation with some of the other candidates and all of us articulating why it is that we feel that we're the best for this position at this particular time.
Can we all sit as well? Can you hear me? My name's Beth Mountseer. I'm a resident of the 4th District for nearly 29 years and have lived in Seattle for 36 years. I have never been entered political office, but if some of you have read my resume, or as I introduce myself, I've worked behind the scenes for almost 30 years now in local government for both King County and now working for the city of Redmond. But I started out my career, I have a master's degree in architecture from University of Washington right here, started my career and became a housing activist while I was living downtown and was preserving housing, both first just as a volunteer, getting involved in city politics, and then as I took my job with King County. Since then, I've worked on a range of issues that are utilities, housing, land use, environmental protection, and currently a transit planner, working on all sorts of projects for the city of Redmond and are familiar with the issues here. So I'm running on a platform dealing with those issues. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ethan Hunter. I decided to run for office because I think what gets lost in politics so often is the fact that our younger generations, who will be carrying on so much of the burden over the next few decades, aren't involved in the conversation. And I think it's really important that going forward, when we talk about things like homelessness, climate change, gun safety in our schools where kids are every day are fearing for their lives, that we need leaders who understand the challenges of our younger generations, of the people under 18 who can't vote. It's time that we elect leaders who understand their challenges, understand their needs, and push us forward to the future. That's why I'm running for office. I hope to have the support of the 43rd District Democrats, and I hope for your vote on August 6th.
Hi, everybody. My name's Alex Peterson. I'm running to bring accountability to city government. And accountability is listening, transparency, and results. As Democrats, we want and expect better results for the people who are suffering through homelessness right now. I can deliver results because I have the relevant experience working on homelessness during the Clinton administration, working on affordable housing for the Seattle City Council. I'm proud to have been a member of the 43rd LD for the last decade. When I was a kid, my first yard sign I planted was for Mondale Ferraro. I'm endorsed by the 46th Legislative District Democrats. It's a dual endorsement with Kathy Tuttle. I'm also endorsed by Jerry Paulette, Ron Sims, Peter Steinbruch, Eden Mack, Ruth Cagney, and also by the Machinists, Local 289.
I'll stand. I'm used to standing at work. My name's Heidi Stubber, and I'm running for Seattle City Council, District 4, because I believe in a better future for our city. I think this is a beautiful city. We're well-resourced. We have people moving here from all over the world, and I think we can do a better job tackling the big problems we face, like homelessness, affordable housing, climate change, and transportation. So I'm a former teacher. I taught environmental science in Chicago. I'm a small business leader, and I specialize in organizational change, and I've worked at places like Woodland Park Zoo, North Seattle College, and for small businesses. And I'm also an advocate for autism, special education, and women's rights. And I'm running because I think that we need to take a big-picture, strategic approach to solve the problems we're facing right now and to create a more livable, affordable city for the next generation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, candidates. I'm going to explain the rules a little bit. I'm going to keep it simple today, just because we have nine people. Not going to make you draw anything, or, probably not even going to do a rapid-fire round, but we're going to go through issue-based questions. We still have time to submit audience questions. The people gathering questions, can you raise your hand? Cool. So if you still have a question that you'd like the candidates to answer, you can submit your questions there. But yeah, we're going to have a mixture of 30-second questions and one-minute questions, and I'll specify which are which before I ask each question. Does that make sense? Cool. So let's get started. We're going to start with housing. And so this question is going to be one minute, so you have one minute to answer, and we'll start with that end over there and work our way this way. So the question is, "Seattle had 31 homicides in 2018 compared to 191 homeless deaths about. Do you believe the city is doing enough to combat our homelessness crisis, and what do you believe is our city's obligation to provide housing to those who can't afford it?"
No, I don't think we're doing enough to combat the homelessness crisis. And when I knock on doors, constituents agree with me. It's the number-one thing I hear, and I am really impressed with our city because people talk about a compassionate solution that is also action-oriented. And the bottom line is, we need more shelter. We need more emergency shelter. We need more expanded 24/7 shelter where people can come and stay with their pets and their partners and their belongings. We need more short-term housing with wraparound services, and we need more long-term housing. So we have to think about the homelessness crisis from the beginning to the end. What about people who need housing right now, tonight? How do we build bridge housing with wraparound services for people that might have a chance to address their issues and get into a more independent living in the future? And we have to build permanent supportive housing for the chronically homeless. I think it's the only way out of the crisis. I think it's going to take somebody that has political will to do things differently and is willing to look, take a hard look at our budget and how we're spending it, so we're prioritizing exits. Thank you.
I agree with a lot of that. Compassion, we hear a lot about that in Seattle because people are compassionate, and we're progressive Democrats here, and we expect better results because of that. There are people suffering on the streets, and we have to have better results. We need to adhere to the, I've worked at HUD during the Clinton administration on homelessness. And what we're not doing in Seattle is sticking to the best practices proven to work. There are a slew of best practices. We need to do them across the board in Seattle. I was visiting an enhanced shelter a couple of weeks ago downtown. They are doing best practices. They are using the diversion program to help people, to divert people from the homeless systems, to free up shelter beds. They are getting people into permanent supportive housing. We need to take those best practices across the board, and it's really the city council's responsibility to make sure that happens because the city council controls the $6 billion all-funds budget that we have, and we can do a much better job with it.
So to start, no, the city council and city isn't doing enough to address the homelessness crisis right now. In a city where it's becoming increasingly expensive to live, and it's no wonder why we have so many homeless, for people that work in minimum-wage jobs, close to minimum-wage jobs, they could be one paycheck away, missing out on a paycheck from being homeless. In an expensive city, we need to address things like that. For the people who are homeless right now, I want to see a solution that over a period of years transitions them into housing, makes sure that they get the care they need. We need to do a better job of job outreach for those that are able and kids that are wanting to work. I think we can do a better job of that. For those that need help because of a drug addiction, we need to make sure that we're giving them the resources, making sure they have the resources and access to get the care that they so need and deserve. When we do things like that, then we can truly call ourselves a passionate city, because right now, we're not doing enough.
So I agree with the other speakers, we're not doing enough, and the city council's not doing enough. I think as all of you are aware, this is not purely a city of Seattle problem. It's really a regional problem. There's a mixture of economic displacement that people are facing. There are people on the streets who have jobs who literally can't get a first-class deposit to move into housing. So I think, and then as the other speakers have mentioned, a lot of other people on the streets, as we know, have challenges around mental health, substance abuse, and those sorts of things. I think both Seattle and King County need to get smart about how they're triaging and helping people who are currently on the streets. To get off the streets into either appropriate shelter, or we need to be doing more to harness the private sector to be building more housing in the city. The time that it takes to build wraparound services and permanent housing is very long. We need to continue to do that, but I think we need to innovate in the ways that we're going to get more people off the streets into appropriate housing or things that are better than shelter.
Well, I certainly don't think the city is doing enough as far as alleviating the homelessness crisis. And if in fact, as was mentioned earlier, we are all progressive Democrats, I hope that means that everybody up here, including the candidates that are seeking Chamber of Commerce support potentially, are also going to be in favor of progressive Redmond solutions. I think that the choice between us, or the choice before us right now, whether or not we want in the city, that's defined by cruelty on the one hand or care on the other. I think a cruel city is one that essentially criminalizes homelessness, that wastes $10 million a year on ineffective sweeps, that doesn't provide mental health facilities and safe consumption sites for people to get the treatment that they need. I think a city that's defined more by care, a city that we want to move in the direction of, is one that has a community service officer program, excuse me, that makes it so that we have officers on the street directing people to services that actually taxes the most affluent residents and corporations in the city, and redirecting our revenue to provide services for the most unfortunate, we're currently residing in Seattle.
Thank you. Seattle is doing, Seattle's doing a lot. It's just not very efficient or very effective. I think that's what's really frustrating for a lot of people, is that, is that we do waste a lot of money, especially on the sweeps, on these short-term and ineffective solutions. It's also the organization is not being effective, right? We need to take a regional approach, and Seattle and King County are moving in that direction with the All Home program, but we need to accelerate that and continue that. We need to let and help fund King County to really lead, and kind of as partners, lead for these solutions. We need a combination of, of solutions. We need near-term, short-term sort of Band-Aid fixes to help people get off the streets and into safe sanitary housing immediately. We need longer-term cures, permanent supportive housing, rental subsidies, and more homes. This is a subset of the overall housing crisis where people can't find places that they afford. And finally, we do need to implement more preventative solutions as well.
Emily Myers. I would say that not only are we not doing enough, we do have some great services in this city that are effective, but not only are we not doing enough, I would say that we're actually actively harming a lot of our unsheltered folks on the streets by, by things like sweeps, by not giving them places that they can shower, they can do laundry, and not providing services. You know, part of this is like, part of this is the fact that when, even when they're connected with services, they know that a lot of times, there's still nowhere for them to go. So why even interface at this point with our navigation teams and our lead programs? I think that, you know, in this district especially, we have the Roots Shelter, which is going to be closing down, which is one of our only shelters for young people. And we, right now, we don't have a plan to deal with that, and it's going to, it's coming down in order to put up condos. So we need to be looking towards the future to put, to make sure that the people have the resources that they need, and that we tackle this in a very nuanced way around renters' rights and affordable housing and the behavioral mental health services that we know some folks believe.
It's fun being towards the end. A lot of good ideas were already put forward, but I'm going to echo a few of them. We absolutely need to open the doors of our shelters, our emergency shelters more. We need longer operating hours. We need to look into our gender separation so that the LGBTQ community can find a safe place to inhabit. But it's not just the emergency, emergency shelters, once we advance beyond that. We need more affordable housing, but there's a, there's that transitional housing step, and that's why I'm a proponent of the tent cities. And I think that our encampments are best served when we have a small organizing body over, giving oversight and making sure that we create healthy communities for people. But these are just temporary solutions. We have to look on the full spectrum. We have to have an increase in number of caseworkers so that we get individualized care. We've seen that everyone's story is different. The reason they're out on the street is different for everyone. And we need people taking personal attention to help guide them into more stable living.
Kathy Tuttle. So the question that Day asked was about the homicides versus the fatalities on the street, and people are dying on the street, and I think this is something that we need to address in the very short term. The World Health Organization has a standard of care that we're not even meeting right now in Seattle. That includes toilets, that includes hand-washing stations, sanitation, water, and all sorts of things that people who are basically refugees right now in our city need to have to take care of their lives. And yes, we need to invest a ton more money than we're investing right now in our city to take care of our most underserved people. The things that we need to invest are going to be coming from businesses, from nonprofits, from a coalition of people around the region and around the area, because we need to be putting a lot more right now than the 6% or so of our city budget into taking care of people who are homeless.
A couple notes real quick. Sasha Anderson could not make it to this forum. She wanted to let everybody know that she was, is working and unable to make it. So yeah, wanted to say that. I think her campaign staff is there. Another note, I just got word that a lot of the audience members don't quite know everyone's names yet, so before you start your question, I think Emily did that, just say your name and then with your answer. And I'll start with me. I'm Day. D-A. Day. It's cool, it's Kathy, it's fine. It's fine. Okay. Next question. This one's a 30-second question. "Seattle spends over $10 million a year on homeless encampment removals, AKA sweeps. Mayor Durkin's policy changed recently allows the city to remove encampments without any given notice. Do you support this policy change, and do you support these homeless encampment removals?" What's our cap?
So that's a really quick one, less than 30 seconds. Day? No.
You can use the whole 30.
Absolutely not. When we talk about the city going in what direction, it's going in the wrong direction. We shouldn't be giving more money to reactionary groups. We have to increase outreach and get to people before they hit dire situations.
Emily Myers. No, I do not support sweeps, and I think that more importantly, we need to be investing right now in, as a short-term solution, in bathrooms and public services for people who are living in encampments and trash services and things like that, so that they can live in, they can live with dignity until we have more long-term solutions in place.
Joshua Newman. People are living in tent encampments because they have nowhere else to go. If we sweep those encampments, they still have nowhere else to go. So the sweeps, that $10 million is literally just being, is essentially being lit on fire while also being especially cruel. So no, the sweep policy is foolish. As a near-term solution, I think that we need to establish managed, sanitary, and safe, secure tent encampments, essentially FEMA-style refugee sites, where people have somewhere to go.
Well, FEMA was certainly a disaster, as many communities of color would remember from the debacle of Hurricane Katrina, so I would like to not see something like that replicated here in Seattle. With respect to the policy of the sweeps, I think, an answer I gave earlier sort of clarifies, I do not support the sweeps. I think that they were a waste of money. They are a waste of money. I think looking back over the last decade or so that we have been doing them, we would much rather have had the $10 million a year spent on housing, on services, rather than pushing folks from location to location.
So I don't, I'm Beth Mountseer. I don't support the sweeps either. On the other hand, I think we have a challenge where there's some people who are homeless who are literally being victimized in some of the encampments as well. What I recently proposed is that we ought to sanction camps that are functioning and working. I completely agree with the idea of bringing hygiene services, caseworkers who are regularly working with those people. The challenge of some of the encampments that are quite dangerous for both the people who are living there and others, I think, needs some more study.
Ethan Hunter. No, I don't support the sweeps. I mean, I agree with Mr. Scott that the $10 million would be better used, spent on housing. And then I also agree with a lot of good ideas on this question. Doesn't seem to be too much disagreement, but I like the idea of having hygiene services for the homeless. And then we also need to do a better job of outreach for the homeless in terms of helping them get jobs and education, also understanding that we do have a population of students in our Seattle public schools that are homeless, and that they need the care and treatment too.
So I actually do support the expansion of the navigation teams. We need the navigation teams to engage with the homeless encampments that are unauthorized. There are lots of unsafe situations out there. You should not be allowed to camp anywhere you want, and I think that the navigation teams are able to, if they engage more, they can build more trust, get more people in the housing and services. So I do support what Mayor Durkin did.
I think we need to create more shelters so there's somewhere for people to go. I know that a lot of what's happening in the parks is not safe and it's not sustainable for the people living there. HIV transmission's on the rise. It's an unsafe facility. There aren't facilities for people that are safe, and people are being harmed in these unauthorized encampments. So I think first, we need to create more temporary shelter, transitional housing, fund permanent supportive housing like we have with MHA, and then we absolutely do need to get people out of the public spaces and into a better solution.
Great, thank you. Next question comes from the audience. It's a question around MHA, and this one's 30 seconds as well, and we can start at that end. "Do you support the current status of MHA, and what would you change about it?"
Yeah. We'll mix it up.
Yeah, we're going to mix it up.
I have a lot of same questions. No, it's better.
Can you tell us what MHA is? Yes. Well, it's just mandatory housing.
Oh, yeah, definitely. The candidates will do a good job explaining MHA. Mandatory housing. Can you repeat the question? Mandatory affordable housing. Huh? Can you repeat the question? "What would you change about MHA?" Sure. And I'll, I'll mix it up, I promise.
They're talking about where to start.
Yeah, we just thought it was unfair to start with the same person each time, so starting with a different.
I make the rules. So, MHA, mandatory housing affordability, where you, it's a city government policy allowing greater density in exchange for some affordable housing benefit. The problem with mandatory housing affordability is it lacked affordability. It lacked proper public engagement. So I think that we should, there should be more. So I think that we should, there should be more of an incentive to build on-site. So we have the affordable housing now. Every developer's paying into a fund to build the housing three years later, three miles down the road. We cannot, we don't have the luxury to.
I supported the MHA legislation. I, you're right, we need housing now, but we also need to make sure that developers aren't being able to pay the, in lieu of fees that are currently too low for them to get out of building affordable housing. So what I've talked about in previous forums, if you've attended, you've heard that I want to either raise the illu- or eliminate it altogether. Right now, developers in a city that's growing and as we're building more buildings, developers are out to make money and nothing else. So we need to make sure that they have rules in place for them to have affordable units set aside when new buildings are being built. Otherwise, they're just out for another payday.
Beth Mountser. Yeah, I'm one who thinks that the MHA needs to be refined or overhauled. I don't think you just rip it up until you've got something better, but there were a number of problems, I think, in terms of the way it was rolled out. Right now, the fees are basically paced, passed on to the other renters or owners in multifamily buildings. Developers are not evil. Their job is to build housing. The people who got the big windfall profit from the upzones being as broad as they were were the property owners. Now, albeit they've...
Well, I think if I had, one criticism of MHA would be that it doesn't go far enough as a market incentive program. It can't go far enough towards providing housing as a social good. I feel that housing in cities are one of the last areas where we've accepted the idea that the market is going to be able to just deliver goods and services most efficiently. We've seen it fail in healthcare, we've seen it fail in schools, we've seen that logic fail in criminal justice as well. So I would like to see a massive civic investment in public housing so we're not depending on programs like MHA to get us the housing that we need.
Joshua Newman. MHA was the result of years of conversation and compromise. As part of that, it was, there's certainly some shortcomings. What I would like to see, first, I think the city needs to dramatically improve its permitting process. A lot of permits are taking 18 to 24 months, so that makes it very difficult to build anything. Secondly, the illu- fee does need to be raised, increased, so that we have more money to build elsewhere. And then finally, it needs to be expanded into the single-family home areas where we need additional density.
Emily Myers. I do, I do support the MHA. I do agree with Sean, though, that it is, it is a starting point and not an endpoint here. As we saw with the fighter on MHA, when it comes to building affordable housing, we are going to have a fight on our hands, and we need the progressive movement to step up and help us with this. So it's a great starting point. I think we need to be building a public housing, public affordable housing as well. And we should be looking into working with the state in order to get rent control in our city so that we make sure that we actually have the affordable housing that our city needs, because we are not even close right now.
Hello, my name is Frank Krueger. I agree with the MHA, but I want to see it go farther with MHA 2. And ideally, here's a crazy idea, let's just eliminate single-family zones. Let's open up the city so that everyone can migrate into our new neighborhoods. We've been too long closed off. Our diversity here in District 4 is honestly a little bit appalling. Let's break down economic barriers and make sure that our predominantly wealthy and white neighborhoods can welcome some diversity and other people from the city.
Kathy Tuttle. We need to be building a lot more affordable workforce housing. I think that's the, the number one thing. I don't think MHA has gone far enough to build that. We need microhousing, we need housing for people who are elder and, and don't want to live in their large houses anymore. We need better communities with a diversity of people who can pay a diversity of rents and, and afford a diversity of housing types. Those things need to be built in our communities, they need to be built soon, because we are in a desperate situation right now where people are commuting hours each way to get to their work.
All right, well, thank you for that. Oh, sorry. See you when, see you when you want to change my rules, Alex.
My name's Heidi Stubber. So the thing about MHA is I think we absolutely need to increase density in our city. We're booming. And unlike other cities that can sprawl out, with our water, we can't do that. So we have to increase density in the neighborhoods, and a lot of neighborhoods in Seattle are actually decreasing in population density as families get smaller. I think MHA 2 needs to have more community involvement, and density needs to be more thoughtful so that we're balancing the needs of people moving into the area and people who've been here a long time. I think we can spread the density out into the neighborhoods as well.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I like these 30-second answers, so I'm going to do a couple more, but we're going to transition to some transit, bikes, climate change type of questions. And we'll start with this. The mayor's office has been canceling and delaying border-proof bike and transit projects. What, if anything, should the city council do to ensure these projects are completed? And we'll start with Joshua, and we'll go this way.
Joshua Newman. No, the, the mayor has been, is, she is behaving exactly as we expected her to when she ran for office. The city council needs to provide the oversight and investigations of the executive branch and as well as strengthening the bicycle and pedestrian master plans and making those legally binding. The city council needs to establish very clear, explicit rules around arterial street parking, especially removing arterial street parking and making way for bus and bike lanes, protected bike lanes.
Well, I'm happy to be endorsed in this race by Carrie Moon, Jenny Durkens', 2017 general election opponent. And I think it's a clear signal that there was a direction we could have gone in with respect to the implementation of our bike master plan, with respect to reaching, having rapid ride reach completion, with respect to having a city that's actually a climate leader meet its climate goals. And so I don't think the mayor has gone far enough. I would like to partner with organizations in the community like 350 Seattle, which have done a lot of work in the community raising awareness about possible transit projects and helping those projects see their finish line with additional funding as well.
Beth Mountser. I definitely think we ought to be completing and working out our entire master plan for pedestrian, bicycle, and also the improvements to the roads that make it work so that you can run transit on the roads where you need to run them. Some of the projects are being canceled, frankly, because the budgeting that was done for the projects didn't account for all of it. It's also bus-based capacity that's actually delayed the rapid ride projects. As far as getting to bike lanes, I definitely think ESTAD needs overhaul in the way they engage with communities and so on.
Ethan Hunter. So the mayor right now hasn't done enough in terms of transportation. And if we're serious in Seattle about reducing carbon emissions and dealing with climate change or climate crisis, what we need to be doing is getting single occupancy vehicles off the road. That means expanding our public transportation, making sure people can bike to work or bike home from work easier, making sure that pedestrians have safe walkways to get to and from work, school, doing things like that. If we're not serious, if we're serious about climate change, and that's the number one thing I think in Seattle we should be doing, and doing everything in our power, that means also upzoning here major public transportation hubs so that people can get to and from a bus easier.
Alex Peterson. We need greater oversight of the Seattle Department of Transportation, ESTAD. There's a complete lack of accountability with that agency. A lot of their projects are over budget, they're, they take too long to implement. With greater oversight from the city council, we can get more projects done faster. We have several master plans. We've got bike, transit, pedestrian, freight. We need to harmonize those plans. We need to get people moving and get the transit work emphasizing the transit moving to most people.
I think with the impact of climate change, we have to make it really easy for people to replace single occupancy vehicle trips with alternative forms of transportation. I think because these are expensive projects, they require redoing streets, they require asking people to change a lot of their behavior, we have to do triage, and we have to invest in the projects that impact the most people. The streetcar is an example of the opposite of that. It's very expensive and very few people use it. So I think the best use of our funds is to invest in expanding bus service and connecting to light rail, and that's what will get the most people able to use public transportation.
Kathy Tuttle. I was the founder of an organization called Seattle Neighborhood Greenways that worked on access to transit, safe streets for people who walk, safe streets for children to school, and it's something that we continue to need to work on. It's a big equity issue as well, particularly transit, because transit doesn't operate at night, and many people that I talk to have jobs, particularly in the gig economy, where they can't get to their jobs because transit's not operating. So we need safe access to transit by people walking and biking, and more transit.
Hi, Frank Krueger. I'll echo what everyone said about transit, but focus on the bike lanes. We absolutely must complete them, and I want to see an increase in protected bike lanes. A lot of our existing infrastructure isn't actually that safe, and we need to do a good job of it. If you try to ride your bike downtown and try to stay in all the safe bike lanes, it's complicated. It used to be simple and you'd ride down the street, so we have to do a good job of it. But I'm also a proponent for new electronic devices. I wrote a device here called a One Wheel. It's an electronic device. It's a little bit silly, but it's electric, and here in Seattle, we have an opportunity to be greedy.
Emily Myers. So I interpreted this question as more about the accountability of the mayor to our voters. And I think this is absolutely a problem in our city right now. You know, we, the voters passed ST3, and that was a great start, and that was a great project, but we're not delivering that. And so it is up to the city council to make sure that we are delivering on the projects that voters have approved. And that's what city government is about, right? It's like making sure that we're doing the things that the voters approve and, and want to spend our money on. And as a transit rider myself, yes, we need to be investing in transit, we need to be investing in the bike master plan and just getting those things done, because it's what the voters want.
I just got word that we have a bonus round right now, a 15-second round. Isn't that insane? 15 seconds. D4 specific, what transportation priorities will you have for your district? Maybe a cool project, some needs, but D4 specific. And we're going to start with Frank. And we're going to go to the left. Yeah.
Uh, D4 specific, I guess go first. Hi, Frank Krueger. We need to increase our East and West bus lines, and when we do that, we need more bus carriages specifically. And to meet our 2040 bus goals and climate goals, these have to be electric buses. So primarily, we have to get that one.
Yeah, sorry, 15, one card. Good job.
Emily Myers. My answer is going to be to finish the rapid ride through Eastlake, because that's something that I get stuck in a bottleneck there quite often on the 70 bus trying to get downtown. So we need to finish up that rapid ride so that people can move through the city and move downtown easily.
That's what I was going to say. The Roosevelt, Eastlake Rapid Ride is critical for District 4, as well as making sure that the bus connections and the bus reorganization of all of Northeast Seattle is done well so we have good integration when the new stations in U District, Roosevelt, and Central North Gate open in 2021.
Sean Scott. I'd like to see us take action on reinvigorating the conversation around the 35th Avenue Bike Lines to start, and secondarily, seeing us heed the recommendations of the U District Mobility Group and saying that we need a pedestrianized app.
Beth Mountser. I think the most important thing are those connections to the light rail and the redeployment of those service hours that you'll be saving to go into other mass transit and other services that can go throughout the neighborhood. But I agree also with Sean on the implementation of the U District.
Ethan Hunter. I ride the 70 about 20 to 30 times a week, so for me, I'm pretty much delivering on the rapid ride, getting that there so that people can get to and from downtown and Southlake Union a lot quicker.
Alex Peterson. We have the chance to solve the world's first last mile problem to transit. We're going to have three light rail stations, so I want to run several pilot projects to solve that. And that includes expanding Brooklyn so we can get buses down Brooklyn.
Heidi Stubber. I think with three light rail stations in our district, we have a great opportunity to change people's behavior. I think people want to take light rail to work over getting stuck in traffic, but we need to make it really easy for them to get there, both in terms of the bus connections, I agree with the first last mile, and also with pedestrian access.
Kathy Tuttle. I have a Green New Deal. I think we need to lower our carbon footprint by 25% minimum in the next five years. So let's do some really big things. I think we need to get a pedestrian bike bridge across I-5 to the new station and a lot of other kind of big things for, for transportation.
Great, we're going to move into some one-minute questions. These are on equity and social justice. First question is, as you know, the wrongful death lawsuit brought against two police officers involved in the killing of Sandpoint resident Charlena Lyles in 2017 was recently dismissed in January of this year. How would you have handled contract negotiations with Spog to ensure the escalate was enforced? And we're going to start with Ethan, and we're going to go to the left.
I can repeat the question too. Can you repeat it?
Yeah. As you know, the wrongful death lawsuit brought against two police officers involved in the killing of Sandpoint resident, uh, black woman, mother pregnant, Charlena Lyles in 2017 was recently dismissed in January of this year. How would you have handled contract negotiations with Spog to ensure the escalate was enforced?
Well, I'm unsure about the power that a councilman, council member would have in that situation, so I'll look more into that. But as an elected official, I would use my power to make sure that, sorry, I got lost in the question again. I would use my power to make sure that the, whatever current rules or regulations are being enforced. I'm sorry, I asked you this question.
Alex Peterson. So I've been to the Sandpoint project six times in the last six months, meeting with residents there, and it's in Magnuson Park, for those of you who don't know. And, you know, the city council does work, there's a, there's a group of city councilors who work on the contracts with all the public employee unions, including the Seattle Police Officers Guild, Spog. And that was one of the problems with the contract that was approved recently, is that there, there was this issue about how would people, how would police officers be disciplined? I supported the approval of the contract because the police officers hadn't been paid for a long time, and there were, there were benefits to the contract, but that was a flaw in it. And it's possible that it'll be opened up again, and that'll be an opportunity to look at that further. There are new tools in place, thanks to the reforms. The Office of Inspector General is a new structure there, so the city council can provide oversight to, to push on that office to make sure they're doing what they need to do. Thanks.
So the killing of Charlena Lyles was an absolute tragedy, and it was a tragedy mainly of the officers who were there, but it was also a tragedy of a failure of our Health and Human Services to help somebody who was dealing with mental illness. And so I think that it, it's a shame that that wrongful death lawsuit was dropped. I think that was a fair lawsuit. As far as the contract, the Seattle Police Department has a history of excessive use of force, which is why the consent decree was in place in the first place. They've done a lot of work on that, which is why now what we're dealing with is still the way they deal with police accountability. That's the ongoing issue from the consent decree that needs more work. And they did need to pass the contract because we had a lot of people who were working in this city that hadn't gotten a raise in a very long time. So there are still issues in the police department that need to be addressed, specifically how officers who behave out of line are dealt with, but overall, we need to move forward and support the people who are trying to keep our city safe.
And just real quick, sorry, Kathy. Spog is the Seattle Police Guild, it's the union, just to clarify. I'll try to stop using our names.
Kathy Tuttle. And yes, it was a tragedy, the, the death of Charlena Lyles. I do want to actually call out my fellow candidate, Alex Peterson, for actually going out to the community multiple times and talking to people in that community. And I think that that's something that a person who is a city council member should be doing, is amplifying voices of unheard people when they are impacted by police violence, which, which happened in this case. I think that, that we need to be compassionate, listen well to all voices, and be aware of that consent decree and make sure that our, our police are held accountable, but then also that we amplify the voices of people that need to be heard in our, in our communities.
Hello, Frank Krueger. I remember this death or murder because it coincided with another one that happened in Gasworth Park. A homeless gentleman was keeping a fire by himself, the police were called, he brought out a knife and ended up shot that night. Now, I want to applaud our mayor... Now, I want to applaud our mayor and the police. For one thing, in the police manual, point number two is de-escalation. We do lead the country in at least saying that we're gonna de-escalate. The problem is we don't take it to its extremes. Once that knife came out and they used tasers, they had no other recourse to the officer's opinion but to use harmful weapons. We need to give them the tools. We need to give them the tools to walk away from that situation, even if the knife had come out. We need to give them better weapons, better non-lethal weapons. Because these tasers don't always work, and they need a way to stop people who are causing harm. But that also should include the police walking away from the situation and realizing they made it worse.
Emily Myers. First, I want to recognize their name is Charlena Lyles, not Charlena Lyles. And we'll start by saying in this question that we absolutely need to recognize the fact that there is state violence that has continued to be perpetuated against black and brown bodies in our communities. When it specifically comes to the Spog contract, and I've said this before, that we should not be pitting, um, police accountability and police reform against, uh, union bargaining. And that was the biggest problem with this. As a city council member, as someone who has gone through bargaining with large institutions before, with the University of Washington, I would have used my office to step in far beyond where it ended up after four years to make sure that these police accountability measures were in place and that training around de-escalation, training around the LEED program was expanded to this area because we don't have the LEED program in this area right now. And that is something that we need to be expanding, that we could be including in police contracts because you can bargain for those things. You can bargain for equity and things like that in your contracts, and that's something that I have experienced doing. And I would step in as a city council member to do that.
Joshua Newman. This does, this is another example. Ms. Lyles' death was another example of where the United States has repeatedly failed to live up to its highest ideals. And by stealing her life and the life of a mother whose children, no, no, motherless, we have to recognize that our city and our nation has failed to live up to the American ideals of liberty and pursuit of happiness. When it comes to the contract negotiations, there should have been built into the contract, there should be the requirements for both de-escalation as well as ensure that the training is taken and that the additional expanded tools are given to the officers. They need to, we also need to address the economics of the officers and where they are encouraged to hide and protect each other through the contract.
Well, I'm happy to be the only candidate in this race who has taken a firm stance in saying that if I were on the city council at the time that the Seattle Police Officers Guild contract came up for review, I would have voted against it. Twenty-five community groups, including the ACLU, not exactly known as a bastion of radicalism, pointed to the Spog contract as a disaster for police accountability. And so it would be news to the black and brown communities of District Four, myself included, that the Seattle Police Department is there to protect and serve. I would like to see the expansion of the City of Seattle's Community Service Officer Program. I think that's a program that would have saved Mrs. Lyles's life. It would have been a program where we had four hundred unarmed officers going to areas where people needed de-escalation, where people needed to be pointed toward services, where people needed health through mental health episodes. And the establishment and the expansion of that program literally could have saved lives in our district and in the city beyond.
Beth Mountsir. I was gonna head the same direction Sean was. My understanding of this was also a breakdown in communication in terms of a history of police contact with the victim in this case. And it was a travesty, it's a tragedy. There needs to be an expansion of community service officers, but also mental health professionals who ride along with police officers in those cases where they know they're gonna encounter. The LEED program is more for diversion of encounters on the street with drug dealers and other sorts of things like that. In this case, I also wanted to talk to, though, there's a much more robust and revamped Office of Police Accountability that's being staffed up over this past year. The council did in the last year, passed new laws that strengthened what that independent organization will be reporting on to the council and others. So I don't know the details of this Spog contract, but I do know that the council is moving in that direction in terms of accountability for the police and discipline.
Thank you. Here is a thirty-second question from the audience. Do you support building a second police facility in the North Precinct? And we'll start with Sean, and we'll go right.
No, I think that the, I think that especially in the middle of having a police force that has been found to be out of compliance with a federal mandate is a suggestion that maybe there shouldn't be additional goodies tacked on to whatever it is the police department is doing right now to make black and brown lives miserable in the city of Seattle. So I would absolutely not support the construction of a new bunker, would not construct the, would not support the construction of a youth carceral facility. I think those are bad directions to go in.
Yeah, to the right, sorry. Uh, Joshua Newman. This question came up at a previous forum, and there was some confusion around if it's a second, a new facility versus replacing the current facility at North Gate versus a second facility. I would oppose creating a second facility. The current facility at North Gate was built in a wetland and therefore has repeated problems of flooding and water leakage. And so that facility does need to rebuild, preferably in a different location. But it can't be, we also need to address and prevent the continued police militarization in the city of Seattle.
Emily Myers. I do not support building a second precinct. I think that we need to be moving towards a model of community policing, meaning that police officers live and work in their communities and are aware. And that way, you know, when people are interfacing with the police, it's not the first time is when they're in the crisis. And it's about community policing and having police be part of their communities where they're living. So I know I don't support another centralized location for police officers.
Hi, Frank Krueger. Here in Seattle, we're actually pretty lucky. We have a good response time. There's a seven-minute response time to violent crimes. But what I think we all are annoyed with are the misdemeanors, and that's what we want more action on. But no, I do not support a new precinct. The District Four, honestly, our crime rate's not that high compared to the rest of the city. The C D could use it. I'd rather see that money put towards building a new mental health hospital. If we can surround up the money for a police station, we can surround up the money to help people that desperately need it.
Kathy Tuttle. I also support community policing. And one of the ideas that came out in a previous forum from Abel Pacheco, who's certainly currently the caretaker of this district, is to have some community outposts for police. Actually, the district is the largest of any of the policing districts, and it's very difficult for the police to respond from one facility. They should be distributed in small facilities around this District Four so that people can have faster responses and more interface with the population.
Heidi Stuber. I have a son who has mental health issues and is disabled. And so I've had to call the police multiple times. And it's not true that they have a great response time in the north part of Seattle. That is not accurate. We have people from the North Precinct having to go all the way from Laurelhurst to Ballard, and it's unsustainable. And so I absolutely support the more community outpost so that people can be more in the community, helping people in crisis and de-escalation, which I've seen them do effectively more than once. And we need to address what is unsafe facilities currently.
Alex Peterson. Yes, I do support additional facilities because we, if you've ever been on a ride along with the police, you know that what Heidi's talking about, if you have to get from, you know, Magnuson Park to Ballard, the response time is really poor. And if we want to have more community service officers who can engage with people, we need to put them somewhere. So it is the largest geographic area, the North Precinct goes over Council Districts Four, Five, and Six. So having a second one farther west makes sense.
Ethan Hunter. So I want to see more community-based policing. And that means police should be able to make wages where they can live in the communities that they're serving. I went to Garfield High School, which is one of the most diverse high schools in the state and up the country. And what I heard from students there is that they felt like, especially in communities of color, that police were there as occupying military forces, not there to serve the community. So making sure that we have more community-based policing and then de-escalating the situation when it comes to especially violent situations, police need to be trained to not pull the trigger first. So that means training for other situations.
Beth Mountsir. I think we need to distinguish between two things. One, it is a huge district that's being covered in the north area, and response times are not the best. Part of the challenge right now, if you've been reading the newspaper, though, a lot of the positions at the Seattle Police Force are not filled. They are not attracting enough people, they're not the pay, the training, the combination of that. So I completely believe in community policing. But if you've also done ride-alongs and so on, people are not based at the station. They're out in the community. We don't have enough police officers doing community policing on the streets.
How's everyone doing? The bunnockay? The symmetrical? Good. When I stand too long, it tilts to the right. Another thirty-second question. These are heavy questions, so I appreciate the candidates answering them, but I do believe these are important. San Francisco just redirected thirteen million a year away from juvenile detention to community-based alternatives guided by impacted communities. Do you support Seattle doing the same? And do you support the new two-hundred-twenty-five-million-dollar youth jail being built right now in the central district? And we'll start with Emily and go left.
Thirty seconds. I know.
All right, all right. Emily Myers. No, so I don't support the youth jail. I've actually publicly protested Dow Constantine at a Democratic meeting because of his stance on the youth jail. It's not enough to say that we're gonna have zero youth incarceration if we're still putting millions and millions of dollars into funding a youth jail. That is not living our values, that is not what a justice and equity look like. So yes, I would support more community-based programs, more programs, and diverting that money away from spending the youth jail because we should not be deciding how those communities take care of their young people when it disproportionately affects black and brown bodies.
Joshua Newman. No, the current youth jail as a facility is completely inadequate to meet the needs. The new youth jail improves on it, but doesn't actually provide the needs that we need. And we have, it's for all of King County. The new youth jail is completely, it's very centralized, it's in the north end. It doesn't really serve families and kids who are in the south end of King County. So no, the youth jail as designed is misguided as far. And we also need to expand the LEED program, which started with drugs and is now expanding into shopping.
I don't support the construction of the youth carceral facility. It worked as a mentor for black and brown kids at Washington Middle School as a result of the My Brother's Keeper Initiative, which was started by President Obama in two thousand and fourteen. And we've had to have conversations about what it means to grow up as a black kid under intense police scrutiny, under an intense watchful eye in ways that would make it very hypocritical for me to then turn around and say that I would support the construction of a youth carceral facility. So I do not support it.
Beth Mountsir. Again, I separate the capital facilities from the kind of services that we need. The new youth facility was actually approved by the voters of Seattle and King County to replace an aging facility that is quite awful. I don't think any of us want to see people jailed who don't need to be jailed. But the choice for youth, if you have committed like a capital crime or other sorts of things, would be that you would be placed in an adult jail as an underage youth. So the choice was to provide a safe place, but I also believe in upstream investments and restorative justice-type programs.
So I don't support new youth jail. What we need are more programs to help individuals, especially in communities of color, who will be most impacted by some of these situations, to help them get the care that they need. When we have, we live in a society right now which disproportionately negatively affects communities of color. And so I don't see any reason why a new youth jail, what positive purpose that would serve in our communities. So we just need to do a better job of outreach and helping these communities get the care they need.
Alex Peterson. I agree with what Beth said. This was approved by voters, so technically it would have to go back to the voters at the city government. I worked on upstream programs to prevent youth from getting into trouble. I worked on fully funding the Nurse Family Partnership for low-income moms and people with babies. The Seattle Preschool Program was a pilot program that I helped design. It's now nationally acclaimed and was tripled with the recent voter-approved Families Ned Levy. Families Ned Levy also funds nurses and schools and counselors.
So the new youth jail dramatically decreases the number of places for youth to be in jail and increases other services, like the Stand Up Program, which is diversion programs, not just for drug use, but also for people that have mental health issues. There are not enough beds for children and teenagers in mental health crisis. Children's Hospital is almost always full, and the new youth jail is going to have a separate facility specifically for children in a mental health crisis. When they can't stay at home, there's nowhere at the hospital, and they absolutely cannot go into an adult jail.
Kathy Tuttle. Yes, we need a facility for people who have committed crimes, who are underage. But that needs to be something that includes very good mental health services, very good substance use disorder services. It's something that we desperately need for our young people. I'm also very interested in restorative justice. It's something that I've worked on with traffic violence, and I think that it would be very applicable to a lot of the youth programs that we're doing as well.
Frank Krueger. No, I didn't support the youth jail. My family has, as a youth, have been through a lot of these youth jails, seen my family go through them, and I've never seen any good outcomes. I want to be clear, these don't actually help people. But the fact is, we have built this building, and it's a beautiful building. We can use it for its other aspects, the restorative justice aspects. We're not imprisoning youth, but we're finding ways to deal with their problems and to make amends with the families that they've hurt. So I think we can make good use of the building that we've already paid for.
Uh, we don't have too much time left, so the remaining questions will be all thirty-second questions, just a heads up. And so some of them may not be structured as thirty-second questions, but welcome to politics. Okay, so in twenty nineteen, Washington women still earn only eighty cents for every dollar a man earns on average, and women of color make even less. How do you propose to fix wage discrimination? And do you endorse I one thousand to reinstate other forms of equal opportunity in our state? Affirmative, actually. And we're gonna start with Kathy again.
Kathy Tuttle. Absolutely, yes, we need to be working on women's wages. And like I said, I started my professional career as a carpenter, the second woman carpenter in the Pennsylvania Carpenters Union. We need to have good working jobs for women, and we need to have excellent childcare. I think that's an important part of having women in the workforce and being able to get very good childcare facilities. The other thing, it's also a transportation issue.
Just a quick reminder, part of the question was if you endorse I one thousand or not.
Yes.
Hello, Frank Krueger. Yes, I endorse it. Uh, I come from the tech industry where we've had really long problems with this. For the past few years, we've been a male-dominated, a white-dominated, um, group. And we're making good strides to fix that. But we have to have rules that require us to fix that. Because given to our own ambitions, we'll just drift off and not have equality and, more importantly, equity. We have to make up for past mistakes. We have to hire more people of color and women to make up for our mistakes.
Emily Myers. Yes, so yes, I do support I one thousand. Wage discrimination is something I've written about in The Stranger, about how the pay undergap in Seattle is one of the worst in the city or in the country compared to other cities that are similar to us. One of the number one solutions we have towards fixing that problem for both women and people of color is organized labor and unions. And I've been endorsed by several unions because that is my philosophy. It's when we're, when we do this together, we're stronger, and we can build better workplaces for all of us.
Joshua Newman. Yes, I support I one thousand. We, again, this is, this comes back to a failure of Americans to live up to our highest ideals and treating each individual respectfully and equally. So we do need to expand these programs, we need to expand labor and unionization rates. We also, in the city, can... We also, in the city, can demand that employers in the city report their, report hiring and pay, general pay practices, and then make that data available. We can't improve what we don't measure.
I support I-1000. I've been a labor organizer with the Campaign Workers Guild and can attest firsthand, as has been pointed out by others, that the strength of collective bargaining is really a direction that we have to go in if we're actually serious about securing gains for working people. Our bargaining unit last year was actually the first bargaining unit on a congressional incumbents' campaign staff. It was an effort that was in our intern cohort led largely by young women and LGBTQI plus people of color, and so it's inspiring to see a resurgence of union activity and securing gains for our most vulnerable populations.
Beth Mountsir. Yes, I support I-1000. I haven't mentioned it, I was a member of the Teamsters for over a decade, actually back dated. I also negotiated the contract representing workers at the King County Council with council members. If you think it's difficult working in the private sector, it's just as difficult working with politicians. And I'm currently a member of RESHA. But speaking more generally, of course, I believe in wage equalization. As a young architect, I definitely faced discrimination as a woman working in a man's field.
Ethan Hunter. I do support I-1000. Obviously, we need to address the gender and racial pay gap, and one of the things that I would like to see is our lawmakers in Olympia pass a statewide bill to eliminate the gender and racial pay gap so that women, women of color, aren't making, you know, 65, 70 cents on the dollar compared to men. Hopefully, we also pass that nationwide. Not having gender and racial pay equity is absolutely beyond me, and it says something about the current leaders that we have.
Alex Peterson. Yes, I support I-1000. And the city government actually needs to go farther here. There needs to be more accountability with the city government. They did some studies on this recently, and Seattle City Light still has a major pay gap there. Parental leave is really important. We need to normalize it for there to be stay-at-home dads, because that's one of their causes of the wage gap. We need the dads to stay home when there are newborns. Expanding the Seattle Preschool Program is a major step toward providing that high-quality childcare.
Heidi Stubber. I support I-1000. I've been a boss since I was 23 years old, so I've made a lot of decisions about people's pay, and the problem is, pay is cumulative. So your future pay is very much based on your last position's pay. So we need regulations about pay transparency, so people know what other people are making and what they should be making in each job. We also need flexible working arrangements, and we need to incentivize that at the city level, both for congestion issues, but also for this. When people can work flexibly, they work harder, and it helps women especially and mothers stay in the workforce.
Great, on to the next. 30-second question. We have 14 billionaires in our region. I think 13 live in the 43rd LD. Don't fact-check that. Our state has the most upside-down tax code, where poor and working people pay seven times more in taxes than wealthy people as a percentage of income. What can the city do to make our tax system more just, especially in the light of a failed head tax? We will start with Beth and go left.
Beth Mountsir again. Well, from a city level, I think we ought to be working more closely with our state leadership and elected officials. We obviously need an income tax, and we need a three-legged stool in the state. It would be so much more fair to everyone, whether you're a young worker, a young family, or a retired person. Right now, the burden is completely on property taxes, sales taxes, and then whatever we can pass in the way of special lettuces to pay for things. So I, I'll stop there.
So I'd certainly use my power as a city councilperson to go to Olympia and restructure the tax code as best as I can. At the same time, we have companies like Amazon in our city who are making billions of dollars of profit each year and not paying any taxes. I don't know if a head tax is the way to go about it, but certainly a tax on a business like Amazon should be imposed in the near future. If you're going to make billions of dollars in profit in our city, you've got to pay back into the city.
Alex Peterson. Yes, we need a progressive income tax in the state of Washington. This District Four overlaps also the 46 legislative districts and the 43rd state delegation. They're incredible, they had a great session this year. We, the city council members, should work with them to try to get a progressive tax enacted in Olympia next year.
I'd be surprised if anyone up here didn't support a state income tax. The problem is, it's not a city issue. We can't change it at the city level. City councils already tried to do that by passing an income tax on the very wealthy, and it's tied up in the courts. It's a state solution. I support a state income tax, I also support a state capital gains tax, but we need to support our legislators in getting that done at the state level. And locally, if we want to tax businesses as a part of our community, we have to bring business leaders in and try to find something that they won't object to in such an extreme way that we can't get anything done.
Kathy Tuttle. Yes, clearly, we need income tax and we need a capital gains tax. It's, I think, the only way that we're going to get the money that we need to actually address climate action, transportation, homelessness, and affordable workforce housing. If we're really going to put these big projects into place, we need to have the money to do it, and we do have the money in the region, we just need to be getting it from Olympia and the work that we're going to pass those taxes.
Frank Krueger. As a small business owner, you might expect me to say no more business taxes because we are paying for about a quarter of the revenue of Seattle right now. But the fact is, without personal income taxes, there is no one left to burden, hold the burden. So I would like to see the BNO taxes increase, I would like to see a head tax increase, but it must be a progressive head tax. We can't be putting too much pressure on our small businesses. We need to encourage small retail and small commercial businesses throughout this city.
Emily Myers. My campaign has already called for a business tax, which looks at the lowest-paid workers and the highest-paid workers, and taxes based off the pay disparities there, which not only increases the progressive revenue coming into our city, but also incentivizes employers to pay their lowest-paid employees more wages when the CEOs are making billions of dollars. But we know that in order to get this passed at a city level, at the state level, we need to be organized and we need everybody on board, because this is going to be a fight with business, and we need everybody to help us and come down to City Hall and talk to us about our taxes.
Joshua Newman. Yes, we, I'll be working with state officials, with our state representatives, to retool the state income tax, in support of an income tax or a wealth tax. Locally, I think we need to implement and work with the business community to design an effective payroll tax, unlike the previous head tax, but work with them to raise the revenue now, because a lot of us up here have called for new programs and new funding, and we have to have a way to do it that the city, that all members of the city can support or at least them.
Well, it is true that we definitely brought the business community to the table to talk about our tax code. The problem was that when the conversation didn't go their way, they flipped the table over at the end of that conversation, spent upwards of $200,000 a year to influence our populace into not supporting the head tax, which, contrary to popular belief, was a progressive tax. And so I actually disagree with the premise of the question. I don't think it was the head tax that failed, I think it was our city council in voting to repeal it without a public vote. So if we're serious about solving all the problems we say that we want to solve, it's going to have to come down to progressive revenue and not passing the buck to Olympia and up to the state.
I have a quick, fun audience question. It's a one-word, actually one-number answer, okay? You ready? On a scale of 1 to 5, 1 through 5, where 1 is moderate and 5 is left, social Democrat, is that as left as you can go? Anyway, I'm not going to change the question. On a scale of 1 to 5, where 1 is moderate, 5 is left, social Democrat, where do you see yourself? Just one number. 1, moderate, 5, social Democrat.
Moderate Democrat or like moderate social Democrat?
Oh, no, you go on Twitter, you know what I'm talking about. All right. We'll start with Joshua. 2, we'll go left, 2. Raise it high, 2. Yeah, yeah.
I'd say 1, 2.
3.
3.
3.
5.
Cool, thank you. That was fun, right? All right. Next question, 30 seconds. The Chamber of Commerce has raised over $700,000 for this election cycle, with $200,000 coming from Amazon. How do you feel about that? We will start with Frank.
Well, people are allowed to organize, and according to the laws, they're allowed to do what they're doing. They can do all their best to influence this election. But I have faith in Seattle's community that we can see past this, that we can read between the lines and see what they actually want, that we can still be a progressive city. So it's just up to the candidates to say no to this money. It's that easy? Hopefully, it's not that hard.
Oh, that's fine.
Emily Myers. You know, there's going to be two big PACs actually in this district that are going to be throwing a lot of money around, and so, you know, it seems a little scary, but realistically, like, you know, it's all about our volunteer hours, it's all about, you know, talking to voters and making sure that people know who is running and what values they stand for. So my campaign manager and my field director are in the back here. If you want to sign up to volunteer, knock some doors with us, help us fight back against corporate greed, come join our campaign.
Joshua Newman. I feel dirty about all this money. It does really sully our democracy, and it raises questions whether or not, as a candidate, I know what my beliefs are, I know what my values are, and I know what the problems are that we need to solve. Right? So balancing the needs of all the people in our community is critical, and people are allowed to engage however they want, but there needs to be clear transparency, and unfortunately, federal laws are not enforcing that right now. But we need to know where, who is spending the money and how they're spending it.
Well, I was happy to see that one of the contributors to the Chamber of Commerce PAC was actually Mariner CEO John Stanton, which, you know, based on the performance of his other capitalist venture, the actual Mariners baseball team, you have to believe that votes well, for those of us who aren't going to be taking corporate campaign contributions. You know, very deep within the 43rd LD's actual platform, we have a statement that says that we need candidates to stand up for progressive revenue, stand against the personhood of American corporations, and that this is really a root cause of a lot of the inequities that we see in our society, as well as our lack of action on climate justice. So yes to all progressive revenue.
I was just trying, Beth Mountsir, I was trying to do the math real quickly of 700,000, seven districts. I'm pretty sure the downtown or the business interests are looking for candidates who are kind of middle-of-the-road, are going to get things done, whatever. They're entitled to raise the money. I think one of the wonderful things of those of us who worked on getting to district elections and the fact that we now have the Democracy Vouchers, I'm late to the campaign, but the rest of my candidates or the fellow candidates have raised quite a bit of money themselves.
So I'm not seeking the endorsement of the Chamber of Commerce or Amazon, and there are candidates up here that have, and I wish they would have said who they were. True. At the federal level, I would like to see more transparency where money in our elections is being spent, and I think it's absolutely critical that we elect a Democratic president in 2020 so that we can have Supreme Court justices who will vote to overturn Citizens United.
Alex Peterson. I've been knocking on the doors of over 12,000 voters in District Four, and I agree with Emily. What really matters is getting out there and meeting directly with voters. I agree with Beth, it's about these district elections that make that possible. I don't think that money, that independent expenditure money, whether it's from labor or business or wherever, is going to make a difference. It's who's talked to the most, it's who's talked to the most voters to your constituents. I think that's what's really important in the Democracy Voucher program, is something that's helping us all, you know, get to this level.
I think it's completely predictable that the Chamber would raise 700,000. Our city council has become completely hostile to businesses of all sizes. Should business pay more of their fair share? Absolutely. Should small businesses also be equally vilified along with big corporations? No, they should not. And city council treats all business, regardless of size, the same, and they are hostile towards business, so it's no surprise they're raising all this money to have a voice in this election. But I think every candidate up here is going out and meeting voters and trying to be effective for their district.
Kathy Tuttle. I'm really happy with the Democracy Voucher program. I've raised the most Democracy Vouchers in May in this district, and I like the program a lot. My campaign staff is back there, if you want to volunteer there. And I'm also really supportive of business, of unions, of all people. I don't want their money, but I do want to have them at the table when we're talking about transportation, climate action, homelessness, affordable workforce housing. We need everybody at the table.
All right, a quick 30-second question, and we're nearing the end, everyone. Thank you for being patient. We are at the halfway point of Mayor Durkin's mayoral term. Do you believe she is doing an adequate job leading her city during her housing and homelessness crisis, and would you support her potential reelection campaign? And, where did I start? We're starting with Emily, and if we can go to the left.
Emily Myers. I don't think that Mayor Durkin is doing an optimal job in her role right now. I think as we've seen with, you know, bike lanes and some of the decisions that have been made, you know, she's made decisions that are going against what voters have voted for, so there's not a ton of accountability. I think we need more transparency in general in the city government, so that if you want access to data, it's not just about having a good relationship with whoever is in charge of that specific department, which is kind of how it works right now. So we need to be opening it up, we need to be having an open-access government so that people have access to their representatives.
Joshua Newman. Mayor Durkin is clearly sort of a counter, a backlash to the change that we have been seeing in previous administrations in the city and the direction the city is going. I think she is doing a very poor job, a terrible job actually, of leading Seattle into the future. Going backwards with the sweeps, going backwards by prioritizing cars, going backwards by shutting down transparency in the city, it's all the wrong direction. I opposed her in the original election and would certainly oppose her reelection.
Once again, I'm happy to have Carrie Moon's endorsement in this race, in part because of the statement that it makes about the direction Mayor Durkin has taken our city in. I think that Mayor Durkin has stood with some of the most progressive aspects of our community on police accountability, has stood with SPOG on density, increased density, and implementing our BikeMaster plan, has stood with the most progressive aspects of my neighborhood councils on police accountability, has been a disaster as well. So I do not, would not anticipate that I will be supporting Mayor Durkin's reelection unless something really, really big changes.
Beth Mountsir. I was going to say, in the absence of knowing who else might be running against Mayor Durkin, it's very hard to predict what I support or not. But I would say that I think some of her vulnerabilities have been exposed in terms of those of us who met her on the campaign trail. It's a complex job, you need to know the local neighborhoods and how things function. I think some of us who've been in the neighborhoods, have been volunteers, have been working on these issues for years and years, could show more leadership, and that's one of the things that's lacking at the council right now, is a stand-up to the mayor.
Well, the mayor certainly hasn't done a job performance that I would give an A or a B, so I don't anticipate supporting her reelection campaign. But we've also elected people like Mayor Durkin for the past however many decades, I'm sorry, that haven't gotten the job done. So that speaks to the need for new and fresh leadership, which means electing people younger like myself, who can understand the issues of our younger generations and lead us into the future.
Alex Peterson. I think cities do best when their city council and their mayor work collaboratively together, so it's a little bit alarming for me to have people running or going to say that they're going to sort of instantly fight against the chief executive. She's working on the $6 billion budget right now. I hope that it's a solid budget, there needs to be more accountability and transparency. On homelessness, we're working right now with King County, trying to collaborate with them on mental health, drug dependency issues to handle. them on mental health, drug dependency issues to help the homeless. We have to work with the mayor to do that.
I agree with Alex, actually. I think the one, I don't think Mayor Durkin's done enough on homelessness and housing, obviously. I support an increased coordination with King County because there are funds, especially for behavioral health, that are accessible at King County and for housing that the city doesn't have access to. So I think that's a good move she's taken. But I agree that you can't go into it and say, we're going to have an antagonistic relationship with the mayor. We're going to have an antagonistic relationship with the biggest business in town. That's just not how I lead. I do organizational change, and it works when it's collaborative.
Kathy Tuttle. I've worked for the city for many years as a planner and project manager for the Parks Department. I put in 40 parks and community centers and also doing work with the Planning Commission. This mayor, and I've also been an advocate and executive director, working with mayors in the past, many different mayors. And this mayor, I think, is not a good communicator, does not do kind of evidence-based decision-making, and I'd like to see that happen. And if she does, then I will support her.
Frank Krueger. No, I do not support the mayor, and I wouldn't support the mayor, but I agree with everyone that city government is all about compromise and working with people. So even people that you disagree with, we have to find common ground to work together to increase the services of the city. I agree with Councilmember Salam when she said that it was an austere budget that the mayor proposed. When I went to school, I thought city councils wrote the budget, but it turns out now the mayor does, and the city council just fine item approves things. It's kind of terrible. So when I'm a council member, I'll be taking a hard vote for that budget.
Thanks, everyone, for answering that hard question. Mayor Durkin is our leader, and, you know, if elected, you'll be working very close with her. So I think these are questions that are important. Last question, I'll make it an easy one. If you don't get past the primaries, which other candidate in your race would you like to see make it through? And will you campaign for them? Easy. And we'll start with Alex.
No, I don't think that's okay.
I mean, you can say no. I mean, we've, I've heard this question asked in many candidate forums.
I think we're still all learning about each other, so I don't, I don't know who I would support at this point.
That's fine. You can give me a political answer. That's fine.
Exactly.
I don't think you have a political answer. I think climate change is an emergency, and so if Kathy Tuttle got through, I would support her. Also, as a former teacher, I also appreciate that Sasha Anderson brings the perspective of working with youth and in the schools to our race.
Well, I know who I won't be supporting, and that's Alex Peterson. I intend on doing everything I can to get through the primary. Should I be, should I not get through? There's probably three candidates I would consider supporting. Mr. Scott being one, Emily Myers, and Kathy Tuttle. But I do, I will be doing everything in my power to make sure that I get through August 6th and then get elected in November.
I'm also just getting to know the candidates, as you probably have heard and I've said. I entered the race fairly late. I'm just getting to understand the nuances of the different platforms that the candidates have. But I think I would be looking to support someone who has and comes out and is very vocal about the issues that I care about, and that is the crisis that we have around housing affordability right now, looking to the future of how we're going to accommodate those people and transportation, and then also homelessness and the human services. And finally, the last bit that I think is particular to the four is the education and planning for the future of what we'll need in this district for our students.
I think Ethan put in a pretty strong bid with his answer to the question about decriminalizing the police for my support if I'm not fortunate enough to make it past the August primary. Climate change and climate justice, as a candidate that's rolled out, a platform playing for a Seattle Green New Deal is also very important to me. So I think I'd be looking in the direction of Kathy or Emily as candidates that would support moving forward based on their strength on those issues in particular.
Joshua Newman. I agree with a lot of my candidate, my fellow candidates up here, and would definitely support most of them, almost all of them, past the primary if I don't make it through. But I'll second the opposition to Alex Peterson. Alex worked for Tim Burgess, who fought for the 99 deepwater tunnel. Alex came out widely and opposed the vote on Sound Transit 3, and he opposed the move Seattle Levy. He talked today about expanding Brooklyn a street. So when it comes to the future of climate change and it comes to that kind of future what we need to do, Alex, like the mayor, is going backwards.
Emily Myers. So I'm looking, I would look to support a candidate that is an organizer and that is a young person as well, a renter, and someone that's really centering climate change in their platform. So I would be looking to support Sean or Sasha Anderson as well. I think they are both, have very great values and values that align with me.
Frank Krueger. Should I not get through the primary? I would support Sean Scott. When I was in college, I was a member of the DSA, and I find that our politics are most aligned with each other. I learned most how to care for people, how to deal with the homeless situation by my activities with that group. So if I weren't to continue, I'd want to go back to my roots and help as many people as I can.
Kathy Tuttle. And I wanted to say that I do support particularly the women. I mean, I think it takes a lot to run as a woman. Going to doors is actually pretty daunting as a woman. I bet you're running into some of that now. And it's something that I think we just need to do. I think we need more female leadership in general, and I like the values of the women who are running in this race.
Okay, that wraps up our questions portion. We're going to give candidates 30 seconds to give their closing statements, and we have a couple of announcements from the 43rd LD leadership team, I think, and we'll send everybody off. So we'll start on that end. If we can do a 30-second closing statement, and we'll just go to the right. I'll end with Kathy.
That was kind of a heavy question that we just had. My name's Heidi Stuber, and I'm running because I think we can change for the better. And I actually think there is more agreement than disagreement, even with some of the shade that was thrown on this. I think there's a lot of agreement on getting homeless people into supportive housing, a lot of agreement on increasing access to transportation. I think our city has a chance to decide what kind of leader they want to see in this office. I'm the sort of leader that goes after changing things for the better. I have for my whole career. I did as a teacher, working in inner-city Chicago. I create businesses that are great places to work, where people are paid a living wage and businesses are successful. And as an autism and special education advocate, I fight for students' right to an equal education. I am a collaborative leader, as I said. I try to work not in divisive ways, not with ideological grandstanding, but with balanced solutions that are going to work for the most people.
I'm Alex Peterson. Thanks, everybody, for coming out today. Thanks a lot to the PCOs of the 43rd also for all the work that you do and our state delegation here in the 43rd. Like I said, I've been a member of the 43rd for the last decade, and I'm running to bring accountability to City Hall, so more transparency, better results. As progressive Democrats, we need better results. I know it's hard to focus on local government when we have Trump in the White House. We need to dump Trump. That is a unifying cause that we need, all need to get around together. And the thing that makes him most aggravated is effective government, because we think that we need to get more tax revenue to solve problems. We need to be doing that with homelessness. I'm the candidate with the most relevant experience in this, having worked for the Clinton administration on homelessness and also having worked on affordable housing at City Hall. I'm endorsed, again, by the 46th Legislative District Democrats, as is Kathy, and by a bunch of great leaders, Jerry Paulette, Ron Sims, Peter Steinberg, and small businesses, too, like ones in the U District just down the street here, Bold Off News, Gargar, Gargarold Statuary, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks for everyone who came out today. My name's Ethan Hunter, and I'm running for office because I feel that we need a leader who really understands the challenges that our younger generations will be facing through policy decisions that we pass. Our younger generations, people like myself, are going to be affected by decisions for decades and decades to come. So it's time that we start electing leaders who understand the magnitude of the problems and the issues that we're going to be solving. I want to see a housing-first approach to homelessness. That means over a period of years, making sure that the homeless are getting into housing, helping them get jobs. I want to see us transition into a new green economy, making sure that we're doing everything in our power as a city to reduce carbon emissions. That means more buses, more bikes, incentivizing things like Rideshare, Uber, Lyft, doing things like that, that we really protect the future for our younger generations. Because if we don't have a planet that's healthy and habitable, nothing happens.
I'm Beth Mountseer again, and I also wanted to thank everyone from picking their Saturday afternoon to come listen to us. I'm running because I also want to see a better Seattle. I am, I'm not a Debbie Downer, don't think the glass is half-full. I still feel like Seattle is growing, changing, and can lead this nation in terms of modeling how you deal with the very real, the victims of success that we're having up and down the West Coast and across this country. But it means being very focused on who's getting left, you know, left out of that success in terms of the affordable housing that we need, not just for people who are homeless, but also our graduates coming out of UW or, like, my daughter will hopefully be graduating from college in another year and wants to return to the Northwest. It means being visionary about the kind of things that you need to do, and it means having the experience of having worked within government. And at least that's what I would also argue is the, though I have the same views as many people here, I've worked across within King County, but also throughout the region with other government officials on solving these problems.
Well, thank you very much, Dave, for facilitating a definitely not contentious, not at all awkward conversation here. And also for making it so that I'm not the only black person up here. I think that, you know, if I get elected, this would actually be the second time that I work as an employee of the city. The first time I worked as an outreach coordinator for the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs in our attempt to revamp King Street Station into an arts and cultural hub that's representative of everything that the city has to offer as far as our arts economy is concerned. And so the approach that I was able to employ as outreach coordinator, I would like to bring to the table as a city council member, as far as doing deep listening with our communities of renters, communities of young people, students in District Four, vulnerable homeowners who are feeling the squeeze of property taxes and not used to seeing representatives stick up for a more fair tax code, a more livable city, a more affordable city, and a more inclusive city at that. So thank you very much for everybody for making it to the 43rd LD Dems for hosting this forum as well.
Joshua Newman. Thanks for coming out, and just a quick acknowledgement to thank you to my 10-year-old daughter in the back, who's been pleasantly managing along with Kathy's daughter, Emma. So, okay. So we do need to work collaboratively, and we do need to be able to bring the different communities together in the city in order to solve the problems that we're facing. I've done that repeatedly as an activist, as a transit activist, as well as a professional engineer in a large corporation. That's not me. So we need to be able to focus on the problems, and we need to be able to find them and create solutions with everybody. And part of that means being able to avoid getting stuck in the Seattle process and saying, oh, we're just going to get everybody working together. There are going to need to be hard decisions that are going to need to be made, and we need to be able to make those distinctions. With my experience, both working in neighborhoods as well as transit advocacy, I'm certain I'll be able to be your best candidate.
Emily Myers. So as a scientist, I am running to bring scientific leadership to our city because we have huge challenges. We are facing huge challenges in the city around homelessness, around climate change and climate resilience as a city, around renters' rights, affordable childcare, and deeply affordable housing. And these are crises that we're facing. And we need scientific leadership in this to implement evidence-based policies through a lens of human rights, so making sure that we are just, we are focusing on justice and equity through everything that we do. And we need, we need someone who's going to build a movement in order to do that. And that's where I have, I use my organizer experience as a labor organizer to build movements, to build coalitions. And you can see that by who's endorsed me. I've been endorsed by Councilmember Teresa Mosqueda, the MLK Labor Council, Port Commissioner Ryan Cawkins, the nurses' unions, graduate students. So we need somebody that will take everyone to the table and push a movement forward for our progressive policy for the future of our city.
Frank Krueger. Thank you again for coming out today. It's such a lovely day. I can't wait to get back out there. So we've talked a little bit about experience, and I want to say that it's the goal of the city council to represent you and not to represent the city. So I think it's okay for us to vote some new fresh faces into that city council. I've been an upstart my whole life. I started my first business when I was 18 years old. I was working in a corporate hierarchy from that age onward. I moved off to India to start my own business and create a factory there. I came back to America to help people immigrate and get out of really bad situations that they were stuck in. I've stuck with immigrants. I believe in equality and equity, and I believe in hard work. I believe that anything's achievable if you just work hard enough to pour it and cooperate with everyone. So with this combined effort, we can solve the hard problems of the city. If you liked anything that you heard, please look to the back of the room. There's a bunch of people in blue, and I'll be hanging out back there, and would appreciate your support.
Kathy Tuttle. I share a lot of values with the people at this table. The thing that I bring, however, is experience. I have a lot of experience working for the city and also being an advocate, running nonprofits, and I have the experience to put plans into practice, the very difficult plans that we're facing right now that have to do with climate action, workforce housing, homelessness. I'm able to put evidence-based programs into practice. I have a PhD in city planning. I've been a mom, or am a mom still. They're still around. And then I have endorsements. I have the endorsement, again, of the 46th District Dems, Richard Conlin, Tom Rasmussen, Alan Durning, Heather Trim, Ed Lizauskas, Jerry Large, Arvia Morris, Inga Manskov. And these people endorse me because they know I can act effectively, not just because of what I say, but because of what I've done. I have years of experience working for people of Seattle. Please do vote for me. Thank you.
Okay, that's our program for tonight. Let's give our round of applause to Alex Peterson, thank you for killing for our vision, I have spoken on two, and thank you all, and hope to see you all out on the doors this summer and at our endorsements meeting on June 18th next Tuesday. I'm sure a lot of these candidates would love to talk to you afterwards. So thanks, everyone.